DLGF is supposed to account for that tax rate somehow, which we haven't seen that. So there's some nuances to the tip side that we're also waiting for DLGF to tell us about. And we'll keep you guys posted on that as we go forward as well. And then one other item, the Medco bonds, just a reminder of this one. The agreement for this is the bondholders get eleven million dollars before we reach the expiration date of tip area. Once we get to eleven million dollars, then it's done, and it's a very long way. The original bonds were supposed to mature in 2026. You can see now that we're estimating it's 2030 if these bonds get stretched out to. The maximum term is 2033. And the reason why we've extended this is the investment was less and then it went from Medco to Express Sprint. And at that point in time, all the personal property was revalued. And so it knows that I've done the personal property revenue side. And so that has really stretched out the repayment stream on this, but now we're looking at 2030 when that can get paid back. So that's what I've got to present. If there's any questions, let's hit it. But like I said, next year, we'll kind of talk more detail on what happened.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Reappropriation veterans.
Thanks for seeing me again today. I don't really know the exact number, but it's around two thousand dollars more than what I had budgeted for the flags. I spent roughly seven thousand dollars of taxpayers' money to put the flags out this year. I have a volunteer staff of about seven people. There's a guy at Zionsville, Tom Wolfsky. He does those down there, those cemeteries. And a guy in the Jamestown Advent area, Steve Lee, does those. So I got panicked, as I do every year, that I'm going to run out of flags. I'd already spent the amount of money that I had. I asked for more. And we want to reappropriate that from the Soldier Burial Fund, which I think is around five thousand dollars in that. And I only have used sixteen hundred of it so far. So the flags go up every year. This year, they were a dollar fifty-three apiece. When I started twenty-seven years ago doing it, they were sixty-five cents apiece. So that's just how much they cost. And there are cheaper ones that could be bought. We buy them from Collins Group. They're American-made in Muncie, Indiana, and they're quality. And then they make a donation back to the Military Relief Fund, which is a fund that sponsors families of deployed veterans or active duty and reservists that are deployed. So that's where we're at with that. Still on the job, still doing, still hitting it every day. So I sent the girls a picture today. I just got it today, this morning. I came in front of you guys months ago and asked for more. I have what's called a non-reverting fund, where there's money that's donated into this fund and that I can use that, not on my say-so, but on towards Commissioner, Councilman, and the attorney, say yes or no. And I used that earlier this year to redo a veteran's bathroom walk-in shower tub thing. He fell, trying to get over it. I just got the pictures back today. It was pretty neat to see him happy with that whole thing. So used a local contractor and we spent, the whole project was five thousand dollars. We supplied three thousand dollars and the veteran paid the remainder of the balance on it. Any questions?
Thanks for your hard work. I know you guys go out there and do what's expected for all the veterans here in Boone County, Indiana.
I want to say this year, the flags, we started on a Tuesday. We put them out Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and my sister and her husband finished up on Friday. All of it in the rain, all of it in the cold, so.
Yeah, God bless them.
Anyway.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move that we reappropriate one thousand three hundred forty-nine dollars and forty-two cents from the Soldier's Burial Line six eight six two to Flag for Veterans Graves Line one two six one.
Second.
Thank you. All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you.
I have a little more than three boxes left that I didn't use that I'll use next year. They're two hundred and twenty dollars a box, so I'll use them next year.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, additional request. Can we, excuse me, can we put Mike Martin first? He's got to leave at ten thirty.
Yes.
Oh, and I'm like, never mind, Mike.
We scored game out. Yeah, that's right.
All right, area plan, the comprehensive plan update. This was tabled from last month. Since our last meeting, we did get a scheduled payments. That should be in your packet. It looks like the 2025 max payment would be a hundred thousand. The minimum would be eighty-five thousand. I believe there is a hundred thousand budgeted currently. Is there any discussion on the comprehensive plan? Oh, sorry, I wanted to say, we have not done a motion for commitment to fund this. So I think we need to discuss that as well.
Correct. So I know we've talked. Oh, sorry.
Don't forget, you're supposed to open a public hearing for this.
Right. We can discuss it first and then before we vote is when we do the public hearing.
So I know we've talked about it many times, but I don't think we've actually done a formal commitment to fund it. To know that the contractor would get paid through the process, although it's going to take more than a year to do.
Didn't we, didn't we obligate ourselves to a hundred thousand dollars for?
For this year.
Twenty-five. Okay, yeah, okay. So you're talking about the balance?
Correct.
The total project's looking four hundred thousand projected?
On the total high end.
Okay.
The council noted to approve for 2025 a hundred thousand, not to exceed for the whole contract four hundred thousand. So you guys have already approved.
Yeah, we have.
We're just all pending the commissioner's approval of the contract, which they did at the last meeting with the caveat that it's not to exceed based on council approval of the funding. So it's kind of like a dog chasing its tail. You know, you guys didn't want to approve until they approved it. They didn't want to approve until you approved it. But I think all the pieces of the puzzle align. And the expenditure as noted for 2025 will not exceed one hundred thousand dollars, which is already budgeted for that. We're hopefully, it's not to exceed four hundred thousand dollar contract. But it's our intention to not bump up against that value. If all goes well, there's a lot of cafeteria plant elements that kind of come into play in the end that we may or may not utilize. HWC or a contractor understands that our primary focus in the very beginning, our hot topic issue is the comp plan, how it addresses the moratorium for alternative energy and battery storage and carbon sequestration. All those hot button issues, so they know that that's our initial focus. So we are ready to move forward as soon as all government bodies approve.
So Jennifer, and I heard what you said, Debbie. So we don't have to do a motion with the intent to fund if the IEDC money doesn't come through because we've covered it already? Or we do need to do a motion?
You've already covered it.
Yeah, that's my understanding is we've covered it.
You've already approved the motion for it to be there.
Are you okay with that?
I don't believe we've covered it, but I went back through prior minutes and I cannot find that anywhere. So if, do you know when?
You did it last year's budget session when you approved the hundred thousand.
We did a motion to commit then, because we didn't have the numbers then.
Yeah, you had a hundred thousand for this year, not to exceed four hundred, is what the motion was and what it was approved. Our budget time last year.
Just real quickly, even if you had taken action before, nothing prevents you from taking action now, just to make it abundantly clear. So if there's any confusion amongst you as to whether or not you did it, I would just recommend that you go ahead and make a motion. Talk about it and make the commitment.
Do we still have to have a public hearing?
But this is actually to fund the three hundred thousand they're asking for.
Well, but we, it would depend on the motion, I think, actually made. Like, are we making, once we do the public hearing, it'll be up to the council to either make a motion to commit to the funding or to approve the additional. But I think regardless, whether, even if, Jules, am I correct? Even if it's just a motion to commit to the funding, we still have to have a public hearing, correct?
I think you would want to do that because you're obligating, at some point in the future, the taxpayer dollars towards that, that haven't been appropriated yet.
Okay.
And this project is projected for a three-year period. Is that correct? Or what was the, I forget what was the schedule. Was it eighteen months?
I think it was eighteen was the goal.
Two-year, I'd say two years.
Okay, two years. So, okay, so next year, we would be obligated for three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, or less. Yeah, yeah, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why we can't have it wrapped up by the end of 2026. But on the other hand, it's taken three months to make one simple vote, so.
Sure.
Just an observation.
Thank you for that. Is there any further questions for John? No? Okay, at this time, then, we're going to open up for the public hearing. Our public comment rules applies. You all have two minutes to speak. I will give you a thirty-second warning, so if anybody would like to be heard, public hearing on this additional request.
John Mercer, may I support this plan?
Prime Daddy, two thousand five west two fifty one eleven. Boon County Marberville has supported and encouraged the comprehensive plan update, and we continue to encourage you to move forward with that. Next.
Thank you. Any further comment for this public hearing? If there's something further, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I would move that we obligate a hundred thousand dollars for the year 2025 for a comprehensive plan with the total expenditures not to exceed three, four hundred thousand dollars for the total project.
Second.
Does that make sense, Jennifer? Do you have concerns?
We already have a hundred thousand.
So you just want, you just want a motion for not to exceed four hundred thousand?
She needs a motion to commit to fund it.
I think technically it's a motion.
I think it would be a motion to commit up to three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand in additional dollars for the completion of.
Okay.
During our next, or our budget.
So I withdraw the motion that I have on the table. I'm going to make a motion that we obligate up to an additional three hundred thousand dollars for an area plan, for the area plan comprehensive plan update, line three one three four.
Second.
In 2026 budget.
In the 2026 budget, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Second. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. Thank you.
The other, the other thing I just wanted to make sure you all got the information on was our agreement between WZR and Cragter and the commissioners. Aaron, most of the person had the questions about that, and he's not here. The contract was crafted by Commissioner Lawson and Megan Smith, obviously, who are also not here. And so all I can do is provide information to you for future efforts.
Thank you. And I did circulate that to everyone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I'll put my Western Health Services badge on, say, with your lit money. I sure hope you do a better job funding the annual service. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, highway, local road and bridge.
I have a question. You still have this additional on the table. So we either need to make it a zero? The additional for three hundred thousand that was tabled at last month's meeting.
That's what we just moved to.
But you haven't done anything with the actual additional that you're asking for, that they were asking for 2025. You need to take this.
Did you need the payment in 2025 or?
No, they don't need additional payment.
We don't need this one for 2025.
Yeah, so I don't think you need that. This is just a commitment that in the 2026 budget.
So does the council need to do anything to get this off the table? Because it was advertised and tabled. So technically, it's still standing out there.
If it's still standing out there, and you've advertised it, you may want to, just have a clarification motion saying that you're going to withdraw that, because that's what's going to be funded in 2026.
Do we have a motion?
Dan, you're on roll.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. Okay, highway, local road and bridge.
I squeeze you, Jennifer.
This is an additional for grant dollars that have been received in putting to the ninety-one ninety-four fund. Community crossing dollars that we were awarded for grants, two separate projects. The dollars have to be used on those two projects, you know, about fifty percent of construction. One project is a small structure. EA zero two one, which is on Pineview Drive up north of Ninety-sixth Street. And the other one is Bridge Forty-four, which is north of Seven Fifty North. We submitted the applications, received the funding, and have left the projects. And now we have to appropriate the dollars to the lines to be able to spend it for those electrical expenditures. I don't know if I need to say the amounts. Small structure line, the ninety-one ninety-four fund, so total amount is one hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. And then the Bridge Forty-four rehabilitation project line, that one's two hundred and four thousand. Zero zero seven point five zero.
I have a question. On our request form, the small structure, it's line ending nine six nine six, but it looks like it's been whited out. I know you said nine one nine four.
Well, the fund number's nine one nine four. The line number, we didn't have until we submitted the.
Okay, okay, I see, I see. Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions for Nick? If there are not, at this time, we'll open this for a public hearing on this additional request. Same rules apply. You'll have two minutes to speak. Please state your name, and then it'll be given a thirty-second warning. Is there any public comment? Seeing that there's no public comment, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, is there any further discussion or motion?
I'll make the motion for the small structure line, nine one nine four. Nine six nine six line, thank you. And Bridge number forty-four, is it nine six nine five on my paper here? To be approved, thank you.
Second.
All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. EMA right to know.
Mike Martin, Mercy Management, Community Director. Hey, we're just running to reappropriate twenty thousand dollars from the right to know fund to Boone County Fire Training Tower Fabrication. To make better for hazard material training and stuff like that. We've met all the requirements through the LEPC, Local Emergency Planning Committee through the state to make sure we can use these funds for this type of operation and approved. My advisory board last month approved that at our meeting to spend that money on there. So we run this by state law and run through your books to get your approval to move that money to, so like with fire, to continue with their training.
So that would be at the fairground?
At the jail.
Yeah, out at the jail. Okay, okay, okay.
And that's used by all the departments?
Yes, all the departments, and even the police departments are using it. It's also, they've got it where it's a state training facility now, which is a good plus for us to.
It's very used. It's very active.
It's used a lot.
Yeah, if you haven't been out there, you need to drive by and just see what we have, because it's impressive.
Any further questions? Okay, at this time, we'll open this additional request up for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak, we'll have two minutes with a thirty-second warning. You'll have to please state your name when you begin speaking. There'd be no comment on this public hearing. We'll now close it. Counsel, is there any further discussion or motion?
Well, I would move that we're not reappropriating. This is additional.
An additional.
Okay, I would move that we approve an additional of twenty thousand dollars to the no equipment line oh oh six six for Boone County Fire Training.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Salary ordinance, community corrections, drug court change. Debbie, I believe you're presenting this one.
We were notified by Drug Court that during their audit, they actually now need to separate those funds out, which they have had to do with all of them. So we are adding new drug court fund to the salary ordinance. Nothing changes other than the new fund number.
Any questions? Fair motion.
I move we approve the request for community corrections, drug court change from Fund nine nine eight seven to Fund nine nine eight five for drug court coordinator.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. And then EMA Admin Assistant, Debbie, I believe you're presenting this one as well.
Yes. We, Rachel has moved on to, I guess, bigger and better, we should say. I don't, unfortunately, to miss her, but she is going to help Mike and Addie part-time. They do not currently have a part-time person on their salary ordinance. She is not asking for any additional monies. It's coming out of their deputy administrative assistant line. We just need to add her to the salary ordinance so we can pay her.
Add her or Rachel?
Rachel, part-time. Addie is now full-time in Rachel's spot, and then Rachel is helping as she can.
And you think Ella will still last?
Well, we're hoping. She's opened the computer up, started it up the first thing, about five seconds. I've still been trying to figure out which button to turn over. She's done very well, so, you know, Rachel was off last week, so there was forty hours there. And then my overtime line, I don't look for it to last more than a month. I mean, I just work with our means, the buttons, you know, so it's not going to be any extra. We're see right now.
Debbie, do you have a job description and also where did the rates come from?
Your wage study.
And the job description?
As far as I know, the wage study.
So there is one?
There is one.
I have no idea. We don't get those.
Is that, is that question stuck there?
I think Scott's in the other room.
And Mike, your new employer is, did I hear Addie? A D Z?
I E.
Thank you. I'm welcome.
I know you're going to comment on this during council comment, but is the compensation committee required? Like, what's the process here? I know we've asked for, well, the commissioners have asked for job descriptions to be submitted, I think, by June sixth to be given to us for next budget. Is there going to be any sort of like requirement that there be a job description before council funds anything?
I don't know that that decision has been made yet. I know that we are wanting descriptions.
Okay.
There is.
This is nothing new. This is same job description. She's just going to part-time to help train the new person in this position. So there's nothing new about it.
Okay.
It's the same position. Rachel's just helping as an added.
Yeah, so we can pay a part-time full-time on that one.
Yeah, so all we're doing is adding a part-time.
Plus, she'll still follow under like EMA that, or the federal government still pays half the薪水 benefits, so.
Okay. And then.
She won't have a benefit. She is going to make it part-time.
When the position ends, when she's no longer needed, are we getting, so won't we get rid of this line?
That's up to Mike. If he wants to keep a part-time person in there, he doesn't have to have it, but the line can stay on there. It doesn't affect anything.
So we're not adding a full-time. We're just asking for a part-time.
We're just asking for a part-time so we can pay Rachel.
Right.
Because he doesn't have a part-time person on the salary ordinance.
Okay, we have part-time salaries for some of the offices in the courthouse. There's a amount set.
Just remember, this is a grant that is being paid from, so Mike has the authority to pay that.
Okay, so this is not our dollars. This is on the grant. Okay, so then I'd make the motion that we.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Sorry. I'm just confused why we have, it says F, full-time and part-time. Is it two positions coming out of this line?
Yes. We're not adding a line. We're just putting Rachel, she's being paid out of the same line.
Okay.
She's just part-time. And we can't pay her currently because there is no part-time position on the salary ordinance. There's only one full-time.
So does it need to say, I mean, would it make more sense just to add a part-time line?
That's what I was going to say, yeah.
Well, no, because then we'll have to reappropriate money for it, so why can't we just pay her out of this timeline?
Doing this.
It's a month.
It just reads as if there's two positions in that line. That's the only thing that's confusing.
Well, for temporary, it's a full-time line. That's what it's been the whole time. Temporarily, we're adding a part-time person to pay two people out of the same line.
So would you be more comfortable if we added a timeline to that? Adding a part-time person on not to exceed a sixty-day period?
Usually, part-time is a separate line. Like, I'm thinking of like in other offices, right?
So I don't think, setting it up that way, putting a timeline on, because this is a salary ordinance amendment.
Okay.
This is one of those unique situations. It is, you have a line item that is authorized to be used on full-time pay. There's enough that you are appropriated within that line item already to cover an additional part-time person out of what you've already appropriated. So you're not talking about any additional monies. The addition to, of the part-time to that line item just allows them to use the previously appropriated dollars to pay for that part-time person right now. You've got enough money to cover it. My guess is that that will go away during your next budget cycle when you create the salary ordinance again. This is just allowing for the pay.
So how should that be structured?
So can we remove the part-time part then come July or August?
Yes, from your salary ordinance.
For 2026?
For 2026. I would imagine that that would come out of the salary.
So all we need is motion, a motion to add for a part-time person. Here you go.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, old business budget workshop discussion. Sherry and John.
Yeah, John, I'll go ahead and start. I know it's a shock.
Go ahead.
I think that all the council got an email.
Yeah.
Indicating that Jennifer had asked John and I to serve on the budget committee, and I'll be the budget chair going forward. You can yell at me louder than you yell at John. And in that email, after discussions with Debbie and Baker Philly, we tried to set out what we wanted to accomplish today. Because of the delay in having a model by which to determine the impact until late July, hopefully, it's late July or early August. Our original plan was to, you know, address salaries and benefits at the seven fifteen budget meeting. Instead, because we won't have data yet to determine how much money we have to work with or not, the thought was, could we propose today maybe a bit of a different plan? And again, I think we're going to ultimately have to come to a decision in this meeting as to what we want to do going forward. But in that email, again, without repeating it all, we thought maybe going into the July fifteenth meeting, we'd have the regular council meeting, and then we would talk about some things around salaries and benefits that we could make a decision on in terms of how we approach it. And again, I'll just bring out a couple of specifics that I made there. One of the things, and we've already reached out to Amber to see if she could generate. One of the things, and we've already reached out to Amber to see if she could generate a snapshot of all those employees that are at midpoint, below the minimum, and above the max. And then she could run some scenarios in terms of, you know, how many employees are below the minimum? I know there are just a few, but there are some. What would it take to get them to the aged minimum for twenty twenty-six? And then in addition, perhaps throw out some scenarios, and I just was, I was throwing out some based on what we've done in the last couple of years. One scenario would be have Amber put together what all employees at the max or higher would, they would receive a one percent raise. Those at midpoint would receive two percent. Those below minimum would receive three, et cetera. And we would have all the new positions coming in at minimum. And again, walking through the different scenarios, we can get to in just a minute. But I think, I didn't hear any questions from you guys via email, so certainly we'll have a minute here to discuss if you have questions. But walking through those scenarios, we thought then we could come up with the approach we want to take in this meeting, and then come together in the July fifteenth budget piece and discuss how, how we want to address those salaries on the Form ones so that it's consistent. So Debbie obviously is going to help us there. And then also go through the reports that we decide on today that Amber produces to see how we feel about those, whether those make sense, or if we want to make some, some changes. And then depending on that, then we'd have a timeline between after July fifteenth meeting up through our August twelfth council meeting, where we're going to have a full day of budget meetings. We would, we would have on our agenda to basically take that data in August, on the August twelfth meeting, and determine what makes sense, because by then we will have received the model, I hope, from Baker Tilly, and we'll have a sense for what we can, what we can do. So the objective for August twelfth would be start with those salaries and benefits and finalize them prior to going into department discussions. And Debbie has made it quite clear, as she should, that we can't go forward with those departmental discussions until we get salaries and benefits solidified. So the hope would be we, we'd get through that effort and then still be able to cover some of the departments that are on our list, obviously. So just for a moment, then, let's just imagine that July sixteenth until the twelfth, that's when we're going to have a chance, hopefully, to, one, get the model, and then set up our department liaison meetings. And also in that email, I know there was a lot in there, but there was also a listing of the budget liaisons. And for all the department heads and elected leaders that are listening today or here present, you will be getting an email from John and me after this meeting with obviously some more clarity. We want to start at the council level, just to make sure we have an approach that we're going to roll out to you. So if anybody's wondering where their email is, that's, that's why it's not yet come to you. So with that in mind, then, just again, to go over the timeline, August nineteenth and twentieth should be on your schedules for budget discussions for all remaining departments that we don't get through on the twelfth, which will be a litany. And then September ninth would be the council meeting, followed by the remaining budget discussions, as well as the public hearing on the budget. And then October ninth would be the approval of the budget. So before we get into specifics about what scenarios we wish to ask Amber to go through with, we, we also need to have a discussion on, one, are there questions from the council? Are there, are there better ideas that we should discuss about potential scenarios on how we best approach salaries and benefits this year? So I'll just stop there. And John, do you have anything to add?
Main thing is, we don't know what to do until we find out what we've got coming in.
Right.
So there's no need spending half the day discussing and deciding what we're going to do, and we don't know. So we got to push it back at least a month.
Any other thoughts, Kevin? Guys? So.
I think we need to know what we got.
Yeah. Okay, well then let's, is it all right if we dive into then what the scenarios are that we want to ask Amber to do? Or are you okay with generally what's in the email that I provided? I don't, I don't care.
I think that's, knowing positions below minimum, the cost to get them, right?
Yes.
Positions between minimum and midpoint, the cost to get those to midpoint. And then I think at some point, it looks like COLA is trending at two point four percent. So maybe we see what a two point four percent increase looks like.
Yep.
I don't know if anyone has any other ideas.
No.
And what about new positions? Do we, I mean, I had in the email, I had new positions coming in at minimum, new positions coming in at midpoint. And again, I'm sure the department heads that have new positions that are approved are going to have some opinions on that. But do you have any other thoughts on that? Because there's eight ways to Sunday for her to run these numbers, and the more organized we are going into July, the better.
So is it already, you've already weighted at three percent, correct? The wage study? Is it already weighted at three percent?
I think she's waiting for direction from us. I don't, yeah, I don't think she's done it.
Because last year you weighted it and then also increased those.
Yeah, so the weighted was the COLA.
Some positions got more than the five or seven percent that everybody else got.
The weighted is the COLA, so like that would, if, if it's trending at two point four, so she would age it the two point four. So everyone gets the two point four, and then it would be if we do a discretionary on top of that, which will be hard to, I think, know a number until we have been in July.
Did you have some thoughts, Debbie, on like what those percentages ought to be?
I mean, at this point, we don't really know, so why can't we just weight it at the two point four?
Yeah, okay.
I mean.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
I mean, across the board, right at the moment, two point four, because we don't know until August what.
And then it should be easy math in theory to do like an additional, whatever that potential discretionary may be.
Or something of money, maybe, and not discretionary.
Do we want to do anything different with part-time and seasonal? Do, do we want to see what the two point four percent is on part-time and seasonal?
Usually don't do the percentage on part-time. Seasonal, I think you have a set rate, don't you, for seasonal?
You're talking about the highway?
Highway, yeah.
Yeah, we did not have.
No, I'm talking to Jewel.
We did not, a couple of years ago, we didn't do any on part-time.
Right.
Last year, it did get an increase during this discussion. I don't know what it was.
Are your seasonal and part-time the same, though? That's what I'm asking. Your seasonal people the same as part-time people?
They are. Well, I do have part-time in the office, correct? So they're separate rates.
So you need to do it separate. Long story short, yes.
Does the wage study have part-time in it? So the two point four, does the wage study have part-time rates in it?
I didn't think it, I don't remember.
I can't remember right now. I don't remember that.
I don't remember it being in there.
We've got some job description that they were classified, so our, doesn't matter if it's part-time or full-time, that just changes the benefits and compensation. So the hourly rate, we used what was in the salary study.
Okay, so it will, so part-time rate then, if you're using what's in the salary study, would be, would receive the two point four? Or we'll only see what it is with the two point four, okay. Anything else?
Yeah. I think, and it's kind of how much money we're going to get, but if you have a lot, you can. Debbie, I'm here in Boone County. When you're talking about raising things up to the minimum and to the, the one thing that I think most of us, especially the elected officials, always want the opportunity to have control over is like, if you, you guys establishing an amount is fine, but understand that we may not have that employee at that amount because of, you know, maybe the time they've been there compared to other office staff, the job responsibility level, which I know is included in that, but also performance. You know, sometimes it's like, look, this is, you know, if we are allowed to give one and a half percent raise, we may only give a one percent raise to someone in there. So as long as that flexibility, we continue, you know, to ask for that, because, you know, maybe, and then we also try to make sure our employees don't discuss issues, but it's public record, so they probably will. But then it's like, well, Betty got this and I didn't get this, and if there's a complaint registered, it's, you know, we're the ones that are seeing the work that's being done and how it's being done. And, you know, maybe give them a chance to, you have, just to have an opportunity to raise it up. As long as we don't go past the max. I just don't want us to have to feel like we have to do the minimum if we feel that that, for that, maybe that timeframe, it's not adequate. Does that make sense?
So what we, what our responsibility is, is to fund it within that matrix, and then it's up to the elected official department head to determine where.
You run your office.
Yeah, where they fall within that matrix.
All right, thank you.
And there is.
Because you probably will get calls about it if somebody would not like what they decided, but as long as, you know, that, that's all we're just asking for that flexibility.
So we just have to call their boss.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, please do.
And just to follow up, I know this has been a long meeting, I'll be quick, but, so Debbie, the way this all works is, what they will do is they will pass their salary ordinance. Salary ordinance is a maximum you can pay a position. That does not mean you have to pay that position that amount. It is, that is the maximum that it is funded.
Okay. Thank you.
So with that, do we want to get a motion together on what our approach is going to be for the July fifteenth meeting? Does that make sense?
Do we need a motion or just we need a consensus?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'm.
I don't either.
Yeah, we can do consensus.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing then is we'll have Amber and HR do a aged twenty twenty-six salary amount with everyone at two point four percent. And then we'll also have a separate calculation of what it would take to get those below minimum to the minimum. Does that sound right, guys?
Mm-hmm.
I always have the impression we got everyone to minimum last year.
We don't think so. I think we saw four. No, there's a six.
Four or six people.
Yeah, there were few.
So, does that make sense? And then we don't do these additional cuts of data until post-July fifteenth meeting, when we presumably get the model?
That makes total sense to me.
All right.
Okay, public comment. Again, you'll have two minutes to speak with a thirty second warning. When you approach the podium, please state your name, address, or business in the county. Does not look like there's any public comment. Counsel comment.
You starting to want in and going out, you know?
Whoever would like to.
I would, I would like to thank everybody for, I mean, it's been a long, difficult meeting, but it's, it's been handled very professionally, and I appreciate that.
So, I do, we were, we had a compensation committee meeting the other day, and here's kind of an update. It is requested that we, as the council, in conjunction with the commissioners, have HR send an email to the department heads requesting job descriptions. Per Beth, the State Board of Accounts is requesting that we have policy and procedures along with job descriptions for each department. From my understanding, this is just getting compliant with the state. So I would, I don't know why we wouldn't work together with them. From.
Are there, are there people that have missing?
From what I have gathered from sitting in the meeting, there are some that are missing, and they were kind of wanting them updated, and they can't find all of them, from the way I understand.
What committee is it?
The compensation committee.
Compensation committee, okay.
Who's looking for them? They can't find them.
But like, we got to have them for the state, like, I don't believe that.
That's a, that's a new request, because they've not activated, and they were just in the office for two months, so I don't know where that request for job descriptions is coming from.
I would say it came from our meeting yesterday.
No, I'm just saying, other than HR meeting, the state board doesn't need our description.
The state don't shoot the messenger on this.
I'm just going to, just real quick, this is a new section on your agenda. It's council comment. So it's an opportunity for a council member to bring something up to this council for consideration, and then it's, and that's it. So it's you guys as council.
Thank you.
I apologize.
I will look into the other issue and get back to you as to.
Okay, you guys have another meeting next week, correct?
We do.
And so maybe we'll have some more information in July.
That's the goal.
Okay.
And the timeline with respect to the budget liaison list that we have here? Sit down and talk with the individual parties that we're expected to speak with. What's the timeline there?
Well, and, sorry, there was so much in that email. Ideally, and again, the department heads and elected officers will get an email after today. But ideally, you and whoever your co-liaisons are, if you have any, would, would get together after we have told you that the model is in, and here's the preliminary snapshot. You could go ahead and start then at that point to say, hey, department head or elected officer, I'm your liaison. I need to get with you between, let's say the model gets to us on the, you know, July twentieth, and by the twenty-second, we've, we've got a sense for what everybody's working with. You could reach out to your folks and say, okay, between now and August twelfth, when can we meet? And try to get those done as fast as you can. You'll also have time between the thirteenth and the nineteenth and twentieth. You'll have time between the third, after the twelfth meeting to also do additional, you know, you may have follow-ups with those you've met with, or you may just be meeting with someone for the first time that we didn't get to discuss on as well. So it's a little bit, very much different than what we've done in the past.
Okay, any other council comment? All right, their motion adjourned. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.